Be trying to move the. All right, ready? Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for February the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would, please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. We continue to ask your blessings upon our s- school system, students and staff, that you'll continue to bless us too, be successful and give us guidance. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't want to start coughing. Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. Do we have? No one's on there. Okay. All right, item number four is our public hearing for the State Board of Education Rule one sixty-five dash one dash point three-six, local school board governance. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Braun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we would open a public hearing after we give a little preparatory statement. As you all know, as the board knows, we did publish this in the area news as we're required to by law. This was not required last time because when Mr. Hewlett qualified, his spouse was not an administrator at the time. In the interim of this term, she has been promoted and is now assistant principal of the middle school. So, State Board rules require Mr. Hewlett to notify the public of this before he runs, since she is now an administrator before he qualifies. And then we would submit the waiver to the State Board of Education. And obviously, the purpose of this is to allow the public to ask questions. It's called the nepotism subdivision of the State Board rule, to allow the public to ask questions if there are any. You know, I know the principals here. I think he can verify that Mr. Hewlett doesn't come around over there and try to micromanage. It lets the public ask those questions if they do.
And we will state that, as with any of us, that family members, Mr. Hewlett did not vote to have Ms. Hewlett in that position. He did abstain.
That is correct. And that was the recommendation of the superintendent, not a request of Mr. Hewlett.
Okay, at this time, do we have anyone? Any questions? Anyone want to ask? No? Okay, do we need to leave it open for a few minutes or we're good to move on?
We can, if there's any board members. I know you all know the circumstances to address any potential problems there. But without any, I don't think we would need to. We've opened it up and no one's here, so.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll close that portion of our agenda, which would be the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number five, which is approval of the work session agenda.
Motion.
Okay, we have our agenda items before us. We have a motion by Mr. Stragles. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. Excuse me. Call those in favor. Okay. No one left to oppose, so a motion carries five zero. All right, at this time, number six, items of information. I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
Wow, we got lots to share about. First up, Ms. Riles and Mr. McNair. They are going to share our CCRPI information. And we have the principals here. If they have additional things to add as we go.
Riles and McNair.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's been a long day. We had our grand opening at ours today, and that was really, really nice. Thank you to all the board members that were there and our people from the community, including the newspaper and everybody. We really appreciate you being there. Mr. Mitchell, I agree. Okay, before we get started, one of the things I wanted to share with you guys, as you remember, when we started looking at the CCRPI scores for this year, we have to remember that in two thousand and twenty, during the COVID pandemic, they did not collect any data and the U.S. Ed gave us a waiver, okay? That waiver not only took place in twenty, it also took place in twenty-one and in twenty-two. So when you start looking at the data tonight that we're going to share with you, the scores and the ratings, those particular years are going to be left out of the data files, okay? So tonight, we're actually sharing with you the data files from like eighteen and nineteen, and then it skips, I think, the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. And so when you look at it, it's not that we didn't collect any data. There was nothing to collect and they didn't have enough to give us to where we could come up with a score, okay? So just kind of keep that in mind. We're going to cover four areas tonight when it comes to our CCRPI scores. We're going to look at content mastery. And what that is, is what you, when I show you the test scores and we look at level one, which is beginning, and then level four, which is distinguished, those are the things that we're looking at when it talks about content mastery. How are we, how are our kids performing when it comes to like our GMAT scores and things like that? So think about the content mastery from the standpoint of level one and to level four and how we've improved over that period of time in comparison to the state, okay? The second thing is understanding progress. This is going to be mainly focusing on the ELA and mathematics standards, the state, because they're always changing a lot of our ELA standards and math standards. What they're wanting to see is basically, are we making progress in those content areas? The expectations go up every single year as far as the cut scores when you look at GMAT. But at the same time, they're also looking to see if the districts are making progress in those areas. The next one is closing the gaps. That's my favorite, favorite one. Schools are expected to meet improvement targets based on prior year's targets. So if we started at a three last year, they're expecting our, our flags, in other words, to move to a four. If they don't move to a four and they stay at a three or go below, the flag go from green to yellow to red. So something to keep in mind. We won't show that here tonight, but we will in the future with all the flags. But the main thing is when you're looking at closing the gaps, are we closing the gaps in comparison to other students? Are our students closing the gap when it comes to content performance as compared to other students in the state of Georgia? So that's what we're looking at. And are we improving as a district? So it's not only closing gaps in comparison to the state, but are we closing gaps when it comes to our students improving every year? Then the next one is readiness. You'll see when Ms. Riles goes through it, it talks more about, there are three components, above grade level reading, attendance, and beyond the core. Those are three measures that they look at. We get, we, we earn points based on where we fit into the categories with that when it comes to attendance. Are we working at above grade level when it comes to our reading performance? And then the beyond the core is one of my favorites, which is when you look at elementary and middle school, are they taking courses, are they being allowed to participate in courses beyond the content? In other words, like computer classes, fine arts, are they taking the language arts type classes and becoming more well-rounded when it, when you look at preparation for college and career? So again, those are the four measures we're going to be looking at. Ms. Riles will be showing you the ratings in comparison to the state and how we've improved in some areas and in other areas where we need to work on. So if you have any questions as we go through the data, please stop us and we'll do our best to answer them. You're up.
Okay. We're going to begin with the first area, which is content mastery. Are our students achieving at the level necessary to be prepared for the next grade level, college, and/or career? And we're going to look first at Todd Grant. In two thousand and eighteen, Todd Grant was twenty, approximately twenty points below the state average. In two thousand and twenty-three, Todd Grant Elementary had a fifty-eight point six content mastery score, and we are six point one points below the state average. So we are making significant progress in that area. McIntosh County Middle School, in two thousand and eighteen, they had an average of fifty point seven points for content mastery. They were fourteen point, three points below the state average. In two thousand and twenty-three, their content mastery score is sixty point eight points, and they are one tenth below the state score. McIntosh County Academy, you can see their progress as well. In two thousand and eighteen, they were eighteen point six points below the state average. They had a forty-eight point three. In two thousand and twenty-three, their content mastery score is fifty-six point nine. They're eight point one points below the state.
The big thing that we're pointing out here as you're looking at the scores is that we're not only dealing with the learning loss between those years that we were losing, the kids that were not in school or participating adequately in school, but we are making progress in comparison to the state. In other words, we may be behind, but as you see, we, we're continuing to improve. And those are the things that our administrators at our schools have been watching as far as their improvement with everything, okay?
All right, progress. All right, how many, how much growth are our students demonstrating? All right, Todd Grant. As you can see, Todd Grant is continuing to make progress. In two thousand and eighteen, we were fifteen point one points below the state average. Now we are two point six points below the state average. Todd Grant's score is eighty-three point two. McIntosh County Middle School, in two thousand and eighteen, we were eighteen point nine points below the state average, and now they are eight point three points above the state average. They have a score of eighty-nine point one. And it's significant.
Congratulations.
I think it's that Hewlett lady.
What that's basically showing is that our math and our ELA scores are improving significantly at the middle school, which is good news for our high schools, now they become better prepared when they get there.
McIntosh County Academy also, they were twelve point five points above the state average in two thousand and eighteen, and they continue that in two thousand and twenty-three. They're eleven point nine points above the state average, ninety-one point one. Very good. Closing the gaps, are all students and student subgroups making improvements in achievement rates? We'll look at Todd Grant. You can see they have made significant improvements. In two thousand and eighteen, they were significantly below the state average. Todd Grant's score in two thousand and twenty-three is seventy-five points. They're eight point three points above the state average. We were a promised school in two thousand and nineteen, back during that time, and you can, and we are no longer a promised school. We're very proud of that, but you can see we have made tremendous gains.
And is this, I want to ask this, just, this is mostly because of our students with disabilities? Is that our major subgroup that we have?
We, we don't have a large enough population to have a subgroup, but they impact our, our scores significantly along with our EID students. They represent a significant proportion of our students who are not, who are, are still at the beginning and not at the development stage or higher when it comes to performance.
McIntosh County Middle School, you can see in two thousand and eighteen, they were significantly below the state, and now they are significantly above the state.
Look at that one hundred.
They have a one hundred, which is the maximum number of points.
They cap you at a hundred. Gotcha, okay. Well, that's good.
Very good.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
McIntosh County Academy, they're at, two thousand and twenty-three score is thirty-five point three. They are thirty-two point two points below the state average.
Something happened.
That is the, that is the special education. We looked at the data, and it's like if they're not prepared, once they get to the high school, they struggle significantly. Am I correct? And, and we have the supports in place, but a lot of it is trying to help them get past that learned helplessness. You know, I've been struggling. I'm a continuous struggle. Well, the work gets harder also. So again, that population, we are, have had conversations with Mr. Willis about what we need to do.
Mr. McNair, so are you able to look at the scores and remove the sped scores to look at what our score would be without that group?
We haven't, no, we haven't done that. We can do that, but when you're looking at the closing the gap, the, the state takes into that, into account all of that. What I would say-
I understand, but it, it would be nice to know.
And, and, and we would have, yeah, we could probably do that and have that.
I'm just curious.
The one with the flags and see if we could do that?
I'm just curious to see where, to where our regular students are.
I would, I would probably say if you remove the sped students and students, other students with disabilities from there, it would probably close the state average with that. I would, I would think so. Because that is significant. That's almost half to where they are.
Readiness. Are our students participating in activities that are preparing them for and demonstrating readiness for the next level of college and career? All right, Todd Grant, you can see that we were below the state in two thousand and eighteen, and we have been continuing to close that gap, and now we are at three tenths of a point above the state. Our average for two thousand and twenty-three is eighty-two point six. McIntosh County Middle School, their average is eighty-one point four for two thousand and twenty-three. They're six tenths below the state. Very close. They're definitely moving in the right direction. McIntosh County Academy, their average for two thousand and twenty-three is eighty point eight. They're nine point four points above the state. Definitely moving in the right direction. And now we're going to look at the graduation rate for MCA, and this is for the four and five-year cohort. The graduation rate has, for two thousand and twenty-three is ninety-four, ninety-five point nine, eleven points above the state, and significantly improved from two thousand and eighteen.
Any questions for us about that data that we just shared with you? Again, we will be looking at test scores, map scores, and be sharing with you guys that data as it becomes readily available. They just finished the maps testing this last month or January, so we will be showing that. And that's going to give us a gauge as to how our students are prepared for the upcoming GMATs or ELCs that are coming up. So again, that'll give the teachers and the administrators a better gauge as to where our scores typically fall and start doing a lot of remediation and interventions now with those students. So we'll continue to work on that. And any questions for us about CCRPI scores, graduation rate, or specific content area?
Looking good.
Thank you.
Principal Jalkin, go. No, no, we don't have questions.
Good job, principals.
Keep up the good work, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, y'all done? Mr. Mitchell, we're going to give you the floor for about an hour.
All right.
Second item was just the ratification of the overnight field trip that we approved. You approved by email on January sixteenth, I believe. Had that note somewhere. Now I don't have it, so. Yeah, they're getting cookies. I had cookies for the council for Council week. And then you have in front of you or on the, online, three field trips for the next two weekends. So our boys and girls won at tournament this week, this past weekend. They both have overnight trips this week. And then next weekend is the state traditional? I don't, I don't remember traditional or duels, whichever it is. Anyway, three different nights, three different trips. So all that's attached in the overnight field trip for state wrestling tournament.
We want to vote on all those next week?
We can.
Next week, huh? Okay.
I mean, we need to vote on the one for this week, this week. Oh, Moss is saying we need to vote on, because-
We got one this weekend?
We do, this weekend.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve all three overnight trips.
I'll second.
As proposed.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stragles to approve all the overnight wrestling field trips for their tournaments. Motion by Mr. Stragles, second.
Second.
Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Our girls have really done well with that, to have our first real team of girl wrestlers, so. Do you want me to continue?
Item B, we have the discussion of our minutes from our previous meetings. Read over those, please, and if you see any issues, let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know. We'll get those cleared up before next Monday. And then number two, we'll turn to Ms. Tammy for the discussion of the twenty-four financial reports.
Good evening, everyone. Turn to page two, general operating account, January thirty-first. We began the month with just over, oops. All right, the general operating account, we began the month with just over two million dollars. We have receipts of just over six million dollars, which included four point seven million of Advalorm collections. We had dispersments of four point seven million, which included a three million dollar transfer from the general operating account to money market account, leaving us with a balance of three point four million in the general operating account on January thirty-first. On to the general fund revenues. Page twenty-seven, period-to-date revenues are at eleven point five million, which is sixty-three point eight five percent of our budget of eighteen million in general, general fund revenues. And expenditures, page twenty-nine, we had period-to-date expenditures of eight point four million, which is forty-five point two percent of the budget of eighteen point seven million in general fund expenditures. And fund balance on page thirty-four, current fund balance on January thirty-first is just over seven million. Are there any questions over any of that? No. Okay, on to school nutrition. We began the month with three hundred and sixty-six thousand, receipts of seventy-two thousand, dispersment of sixty-five thousand, leaving three hundred and seventy-three thousand in the school nutrition bank account. School nutrition fund balance on page one fourteen, three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in the school nutrition fund balance. Local projects, page one nineteen, began the month with one point seven million, had a little bit of interest, two hundred and nine dollars, dispersment of forty-two thousand, leaving one point seven million, twenty-two thousand in the local project account. Money market account, we began the month with just over a billion. We had that transfer in from the general operating of three million, general interest of sixty-six hundred dollars, leaving a balance of just over four billion in the money market account.
Next month, interest will be better.
Yes. And we're currently earning three percent on that account.
That sounds.
Uh, Georgia One Fund debt service, we began the month with three point three. We had January interest on that account of over fifteen thousand. And East Plus receipts of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, leaving a balance of three point five million. I do want to point out that the January East Plus receipt was down significantly from January of last year. It was down seven point three. So that usually is a reflection of holiday shopping, so don't know what was different this year.
Oh, the weather was so nasty. Ms. Franklin?
Yes, ma'am?
What account, what bank is this account in?
The Georgia Fund.
The Georgia One Fund.
Georgia One Fund.
Oh, okay.
It's a state entity that-
Gotcha.
For local governments to fund their investments.
Are there any questions?
That's a lot of interest, too. Do we get three percent off that?
That's more.
I'm not sure what the percentage is on that. It fluctuates, but I can find that out for you.
Well, no, I was just curious.
But it is typically higher than what we get at banks.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Franklin? Okay.
The next item is just item information. Rusty, will you pull up that pay schedule? Yeah, I know people aren't first to go ahead and post when they go on the pay. So we posted the calendars. We've posted work calendars, so now they, we can, we can go ahead and post.
Okay.
The payday. So if y'all will look, you can look at that and you can let me know by next week.
That way, if we have any questions of when we're going to get paid, we can refer to this. This is posted online, isn't it? On the website, or it will be?
Will be. Yeah, we want to judge or at least look at it before we've posted it.
Okay.
So if you see any things that-
I don't think we're the ones that need to look at it, but anyway.
Well, this is true.
We need to be prepared for when we get those calls, and then you'll know what day is payday.
And it kind of, I guess, lucky, I guess Thanksgiving is so much later for the next two years, so that, it doesn't really affect that November much, so. All right.
All right, number four is our facilities and operations update. Mr. Mossen?
Great evening, board. It's a pleasure to stand before you tonight. I want to start off with a discussion about the McIntosh County Middle School bathroom project. It's, has broken ground. We had some movement of where it was going to actually be, but we came settled upon it being flush with the front of the field house out there. It's going to be a brick building that mimics the style of the field house with the same roof lines, and it's going to be a great little facility for us and really make us ADA compliant and have a place that we can have a nice bathroom and be proud of. So I'm really excited about that. It's, it's underway. Middle school landscaping, if you've driven by the middle school today, and if you haven't, please drive by tomorrow on the ninety-nine side. Under, right in front of the new cafeteria and a little bit on the other side, we've had, I think it was four beautiful palm trees added, some lush landscaping. They're not even done. There's going to be some more trees with some color, plants with some color pop in there and then mulch. It's going to absolutely make that, bring that project to a real final conclusion and look really, really, really good. I got to talk to Mr. Brooker today, and he was all smiles about it. It's, it's going to be really, really nice, and I'm excited about that. If, Rusty, if you'll pull up that picture, I just want to brag on our maintenance department. At elementary school, we had two drains that were absolutely way too low. Not from us, from whenever they built Todd Grant, whatever the situation was. Well, all the mud and all the dirt had flown into these drain and caused this very big crater in two areas. And so we started pricing out what it would cost to raise these drains, and the cost was absorbing. It was absolutely crazy. So our maintenance men built the forms, built everything there, professionally done that and raised those drains, got dirt in there and fixed that area up themselves. It, it saved us a lot of money and it just showed the talent that our men have. You can't even see that the, underneath that top concrete layer, there was beautiful forms that go down pretty deep, and they had to raise that up and make those drains level. So that was just a time for me to say, great job to our maintenance crew. They are talented, and they're doing some stuff that is saving us a lot of money. So I want to thank Heath Mixon and that whole group for all the hard work that they put in.
Mr. Mossen. K.L., Kurt Loder?
Yeah, well, he was one of them, and I think the other one was signed by, by somebody.
They got to put their imprint there. It's going to be there for years.
Twenty years from now when they get back and see a little something, something. I enjoyed seeing it when I saw that. I would like to really say that I'm very excited about this next announcement because I've been so many times to install back on the solar project. Todd Grant is actually up and running. We're producing energy that's going back into the grid. I'm hoping that next month, if not next month, the following month, we'll actually be able to see what the- I'm hoping that next month, if not next month, the following month, we'll actually be able to see what the, um, savings or the money that we will save or, or make from that project will actually come to fruition. Now, e- even though that it's been a long time, this was a real blessing. When they sold that company to the new company, I was like, ooh, you know, that's, that's not good. But this company that has come in is very detail oriented and their standards were a little different. So they went thoroughly through that system and replaced everything up to what they wanted to do. And they were, they have been so communicative with us. They've told me every step of the way exactly what they're gonna be doing. Um, they've done a great job and I feel confident with it being safe and, and ready to go. So even though it's taken a while, I, I really feel good about where we are. And they now have to turn their attention to the middle school and we're hoping within the next month, the middle school will also be up online and producing. We'll see how long it takes. I, um, I told them pretty specifically that do it right. If it takes a little longer, we're patient. It's not costing us anything. It's not any, um, problem for us, but, um, we want it to be producing at its optimal, um, performance rates and as safe as it can be. So I'm really excited about Todd Grant and seeing what actually happens with that. So that, that's a, a great little announcement I, I get to make tonight. If you'll see on here for your approval or for your decision, if you'd like to move forward, we have a, excuse me, um, AC replacement. As you know, that the AC in the auditorium at the high school has been a thorn in our side. Not only because it hasn't been working because of how difficult it's been to get. Well, we finally, um, narrowed it down. We did our due diligence, got two quotes and came up with the best quote. Installed and back in action, um, not to exceed thirty-nine. I believe we have thirty budgeted for that, but we have some other areas just to be forthright. And for your choice, if you'd like to move forward with this, we're just bringing it to you. Um, budgeted in the project's account is fifty thousand dollars for new fencing around, um, the middle school. Even though that fencing is standing, um, it is rusty, it's old, and I think it just stands out so much from what we've done to the front and the whole building that it, to me, it really takes away from the looks. Um, if you would like to move forward, we have a bid on here for, um, forty-one thousand. We have fifty thousand budgeted. So a little, um, magic from Tammy, we can probably move some things around and make both of those projects happen, um, through the budgeting. So, um, for your option.
We will say that most of our budgets, uh, most of our local projects have come in under budget this year.
That is true.
We've tried to do a really good job with that, so.
I've been very, very physically responsible and as you can see from that report that Ms. Franklin just showed, that, um, you guys have done a great job at being that way.
That, that completes the new fence all the way around the facility?
Yes. And let me, it will go, this is even better than what, um, we started off with. If you can picture the band room between the gymnasium and the band room, there's a little bit of fence there. If you look at that fence, it is in very bad repair and just as an eyesore to me. And then move to the other side from the, um, band room to the weight room, that fence there is, um, old, rusted out. It definitely need, we need to do something regardless in those two areas, just for, um, safety and gates and, and such. And then on the other side of the band room, uh, of the wa- weight room, all the way around the whole football field, all the way back to the girls and boys' club. And one of the beautiful things that I think that it's gonna really improve is, if you n- notice where the gate is, that you go into the old football field, or into the football field right in front of the, um, field house. There's a cutout. There used to be an old transportation shop there, a, uh, building for fixing the bus. It was the bus department. And, um, it's got a cutout and it jagged and the fence is right on the lip. We're gonna straighten that out and it'll be a beautiful straight fence all the way down. One, one fence uniform that matches the front fence. It's a black coated fence, um, just gonna be outstanding with a brand-new gate that we'll be able to get in there and, um, ha- have something that I think that we can be really proud of. Again, we could go in any direction. The, the fence honestly is up. In my opinion, uh, the right way to go to complete that look would be to, to replace that fence and, um, make it as secure and safe as possible and aesthetically pleasing.
Fit well with the new bathroom, too.
Well, I think that, um, again, McIntosh County is a, a great place to live and work and definitely a great place to go to school. Our facilities are in great repair from Todd Grant all the way to the high school. We have beautiful facilities and this just is, just continues on with our, our upgrade to show that where you go to school and, and work is a great place to be beautifully and, um, aesthetically. Any questions? All right. So while I'm up here, I will skip over to that COVID report. We've had a few COVID cases in the past, but currently, right now, we're at one positive COVID case that is in the system. And, um, worked through all the other cases and they're back in action. It's been very, very low numbers in comparison to where we were. So, um, we're in a good spot, but I would be remiss to say that we still are taking our serious look at our general health, safety protocols. We're still washing hands. We're still, um, sanitizing the best we can and doing all the little things, um, when you're sick. We ask you to stay home and with a fever and not return until you're, you're fever free for twenty-four hours. So all the basic general health protocols are, are in place and I think it's having a good, uh, an impact on our COVID numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. All right, our next item, um, quality workforce personnel. We'll do that in executive session. And then E, community engagement?
Mm-hmm. McIntosh grows. That is our partnership with the chamber. So I di- I didn't write down the exact date, but it was one day last week. Or maybe the week before. Anyway, they had a financial presentation. They did their first one at MCA with tenth graders. Um, Michael Ransom from first and, um, Ellis Tucker did that presentation. Um, and then we have volunteer readers for every month, already signed up for Todd Grant on specific days to come in. And then our Tiger Clinic grand opening today, it was a fabulous event.
Did we have any patients or we were just opening today?
No, we've had patients. Talk about that, Mr. McNair.
We've been open since January the sixteenth.
That's right.
And they have a steady flow of, of new patients in the clinic. On Monday, we typically have anywhere from forty to sixty kids in our nurses' clinic. So we're trying to transition them now, um, by getting parental consent so they can be seen in the clinic itself. Um, so again, we're not gonna turn anyone away as long as they have consent cards. Been working really well. We've had some positive reviews on, on Facebook. Some of our teachers' parents have taken their kids in there and everyone's showed Facebook and said that it was very convenient for them instead of having to drive to Brunswick to go to urgent care or some clinic. They sit there, come by, they didn't have to take their kids out of school and the kids wanting to go back to class, which is really good because attendance is always an issue during this time of year.
That's right.
So we're happy with that and, uh, we can do a lot more. Uh, getting ready to happen. I talked to Dr. Chandler, um, after the grand opening. And we talked about working on transportation where our kids from all schools can have access to the clinic during the day. And we're just kinda working out the logistics and kinks with that. Um, so if they're sick at MCA, they'll have transportation as long as we get parental consent, um, to transport them to the clinic. So they can be diagnosed. Nurse practitioner, very well experienced. She has, I think, four or five years' experience in school, basically. So we got someone that knows what to do.
Great.
Pretty much do everything in there except take expert.
Okay.
Take work, probably everything, so we're good.
Awesome.
But just like a doctor's office.
Yeah. Very nice.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion to go to executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, no one left to oppose, so we have five zero. All right, we will return. Yes. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues. Can I have a motion to return to open session? Motion. Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, superintendent recommends personnel report appendix A. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McIver. Second. Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Okay, superintendent recommends personnel report appendix B. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stragles. Second. Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor?
Mayor Chair Upstein.
Okay, motion carries four, zero, one. Mr. Hewlett, abstain. Okay? And just for the record, appendix B was Ms. Hewlett, so that we'll have that in there. Okay, any? Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so any board comments tonight?
No.
I think I kept them too long next week.
We'll just talk a lot next week.
Hey, everything's.
We'll save it for you next week.
Everything's quiet, no complaints?
Always says, it was no cameras tonight. I'll wait for next one.
Well, if we have anything we need to air out, I'd rather we do it tonight, while the camera's not here, so. All right, well, we adjourn.
Have a good night.
Good night.